Rebecca, full force, Joyce? I'm waiting for David to come in. He's getting hung up. You might want to just go ahead.
Okay. Some, I'll make a motion that we endorse the settlement agreement as discussed in executive session.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, number, item number four, approval of minutes from the May 12 meeting, which was a regular meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Ed, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public communications, we have a number of public communications to read into the minutes. From the, this is from Peter Jensen. Submitted, sorry. This is a little bit small. To the full select board, I'd like to thank all of you for the time afforded the townspeople to thoroughly review the budget comments at the recent 512 select board meeting. I once again urge you to review the submissions and tally the concerns as a means to better implement the desires of the townspeople. I lost count as to how many comments were presented to the select board, but it was well over 30. Almost half were about procedure and policy, i.e. should this line item be under this department or another, et cetera? Requests for different allocations were less than a third, allocate monies to Swift House, et cetera. Over one-third were comments on the budget being too large in one way or the other, but all these were adamant that it should be decreased generally based specifically on the dire economic times and the taxpayers' decreased ability to pay. There didn't seem to be a single comment specifically requesting that the overall budget be increased. That's a strong argument to decrease the property tax burden this year. A quick survey of the bordering towns in the northwest corner showed decreases in their 2021 budgets. Port Mal, minus 0.86%, Warren, minus 0.38%, Sharon, minus 0.8%, Sherman, minus 2.25%. The proposed Kent budget increase of 5.13% does not consider the economic times we are in as an outlier and should not be passed as is. Relief for the beleaguered taxpayer should be the number one priority of the select board. On a specific note, I do applaud you all on the select board for deferring any salary or remuneration, remuneration increases for this year and doing so based on the comments received. While I've only been in Kent a few years now, this is the first time I've seen a decrease made so late in the process and based specifically on taxpayers' comments. I'm sure you'll convey this to the Board of Finance so they can adjust the budget down accordingly for their final presentation to the townspeople next week. It's a small amount, really symbolic in nature, but a good gesture to show you are all listening. It was suggested that the way to impact the budget, one way or another, is to gather up a group of like-minded townspeople and march to town hall and make one's position known. I've attended other select board meetings and to have well over 30 commenters on a single issue is very impressive amount, is a very impressive amount for Kent. And the 10-plus voices urging a decrease in the budget is significant. You may remember at a year's previous budget, passed by a vote of 17 to 6, well less than the 30, over 30 comments offered. It was further suggested that another way to impact the budget is to be a member of a board and then set the budget. I refute that approach. Boards serve only at the will of the townspeople and should represent their wishes, not the other way around. The boards make decisions that the townspeople must abide. One last item, meeting notifications. It's good to hear that the town's attorney agrees that the townspeople do need to have a physical notification of specific meetings per statutory requirements, even in these disrupted and challenging times. This had been a practice that fell into inaction in the recent past and was only re-implemented based partly on my urging of the last year. It would be good to also have legal guidance on meeting content notification beyond just the date and time as well. I eagerly await that information. I've offered ideas on a more permanent town bulletin board and would gladly work with whomever to see that realized. Oh, and as we open our town, please give thought to how we can support the small businesses by offering them as much space as they need in the public realm to restart their activities if guidelines dictate limited indoor activities. Respectfully, Peter Jensen. So I think a lot of this was addressed and discussed with him at the, to a certain extent, at the Board of Finance meeting. I know this has been a conversation that he's been having for a while now, but I don't know if the board has any further comments or any thoughts or action that they'd like to take.
Just that the, the question that comes to my mind, is there a public outcry to slash the budget such that we reduce the budget significantly? And while I understand that cuts were made in certain other towns, it just seems to me that what we have done, based on what we know we have to spend money on, we've done prudent planning. But, and you know, anybody can, can, can go into any department and say, well, I don't like that department and I think they shouldn't work or shouldn't do something, or I think you need to cut out so many such things. And, you know, if that is the will of the people, one, that would be good to know, and two, then it would be incumbent upon all of us in all the departments to take, I don't know, a percentage out every time, if that's indeed the goal. The Board of Finance has asked that we keep the mill rate and the tax rate flat, and that has been achieved. So that may not be able to be done next year, but we'll, we'll have to deal with that next year.
Ed, any, anything you want to add?
No, I agree with Chris on that one. Next year, if we need, we can cut more or we can add. So either way.
Okay, I have another one from Peter Jensen. To the Kent Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, I do appreciate both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance efforts in these challenging times as disruptions this year have made it difficult for everyone to either manage the town's budget process or even to follow it. But several points must be made to both as major disappointments and possibly even actions requiring lawful correction. First, the process itself has not been transparent. While the Board of Selectmen cited Connecticut Governor decrees regarding the method of how to adopt a town budget, nowhere was it stated that the vote on a budget would rest solely with the Board of Finance and that the Board of Finance meeting on the, on May 19 would be when the final budget be voted on and adopted. The town's budget was adopted in an opaque manner, not whatsoever transparent to the public as it must be. The agenda item for the Board of Finance meeting on May 19 states only for old business, proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. The meeting itself was titled only, only Board of Finance Special Meeting. This was, this was no notice whatsoever of a budget vote. Furthermore, the entire budget was a virtual online affair. There was no publishing of the budget as required by naked state regulations. Second, the agenda for the Board of Finance May 19 meeting shows agenda item number four as above and afterwards, agenda item number five, comments of public and invited guests. This is improperly ordered, especially if four was to be a vote. What transpired was the Board of Finance voted for a budget and only then could the public make comment on the budget. I personally wanted to make comment, especially because the third issue below was lacking before the vote, before the vote, but was prohibited from doing so. I can point out that the Board of Finance did field questions from the public on other items in the same meeting and particularly items which impacted specifically the budget increases on the Swift House maintenance. So only certain public comment was solicited, but not all. This is improper and possibly unlawful. Because, because of the constrained situation, the Board of Selectmen set up a survey, a survey to solicit commentary on the town budget and particular questions could be directed towards the three main boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Education, who then it was announced would respond. They submitted questions and addressed them to all three boards. Board of Selectmen answered questions on their May 12, on their meeting of May 12. The Board of Finance provided no forum, neither live or virtual. In fact, there was no way to even address an issue to the Board of Finance other than to attend a public meeting, nor did they answer any questions addressed to them on the survey. In fact, they purposely cut off any public discussion as noted in the second issue above. I don't know what the BOE provided as a forum to address their questions or if they even did. This is unacceptable and possibly unlawful. Fourth, during the BOs meeting on May 12, feeling the pressure of comments on the survey to decrease the budget, the full BOs in their entirety stated they would defer their compensation raise, preferring an increase in salary and/or stipend. Yet this was not provided to the BOF for their final vote on the budget and the town's adopted budget includes an increase in compensation. This is unacceptable and must be rectified if the BOs wants to assure public that they act with integrity. I would like to know what the town's legal counselor thinks of the issues noted above. I also find it startling that the last actions of both the BOs and BOF was increasing the budget $11,000 when it should have been abundantly clear that we are in the most unprecedented times of a major economic depression the likes of we have never seen. Perhaps Swift House does need attention, so allocate monies from another line item that needs less attention this year, but don't increase the overall budget. While it is appreciated that the mill rate is not increasing, the budget is, and this increase will impact all budgets in future years. It's really outrageous and most disrespectful attitude of the, to the public who you all purport to represent. It was pointed out to me specifically on the BOs May 12 meeting that if I want to make an impact, I should get on a board. I reject that as the boards should represent the people, not the board makes decisions which the people must accept. But unfortunately, it was made abundantly clear at the Board of Finance May 19 meeting that the board does run the town and that not only is public input not considered, it is not even allowed. Shameful, respectfully, Peter Jensen, A.D., North Main Street, number 35, Kent. There were, there's a couple of things in here that I just wanted to address. That there was no notice whatsoever of a budget vote there. There was, we were very thoughtful and very careful to do the best and abide by the executive orders that, that were written and promulgated. There was a Board of Finance, a sign out on the road that was there. It was worn. So I'm, I'm not in agreement with him on that. And the other one was the, the givebacks for our, all of our, our three increases. I, I know that I can speak for the other two selectmen in saying that we absolutely will stand behind what we offered and it's something that, you know, will advise the Board of Finance in a more official capacity and, and will also notify Barbara. I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna unsay what they said in good faith at that meeting.
I'd just like to add, Peter, if Peter or anyone else has specific line items that they have a problem with, if they have a specific department, if they have a specific anything, that's more helpful than just saying, please cut. Please cut doesn't help when we're trying to run all different, all different departments. And, and while I agree with Peter that the, I find that the Board of Finance's decision process to, to come back at us, the Board of Selectmen's budget and say, hey, you guys haven't managed this right. We want to keep a flat mill rate, and then they dump $6,000 to the Swift House maintenance, to me is, is just, is, is, is micromanaging on specific projects that, that one or two people might, might find appropriate. Not saying that I don't like the thought, I just don't like the process. And while Peter has come at not only this Board of Selectmen and this Board of Finance, he has been here repeatedly and I personally, I appreciate, appreciate that he's there. But I think what would be really helpful is to find out what bothers some people and let's see if we can't, you know, can't, can't do that, attack it that way.
And I, I don't think, you know, the way he characterized his disagreement with the, Chris, you said, join a board, or it might have been Mark Sabetic, I can't remember. I don't think that was to say that there's, that it's, that it's, how the board works is in, in converse with, with what he's saying. I, it was just an articulation to a member of the public who is passionate about being engaged, to come and be engaged and be part of the process and, and, and understand the inner workings and have a voice on board somewhere. I think that's all that was. It was benign and it sort of characterized in a little bit more of a too much acute way. So, Ed, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't have any comment, but I'm still in support of, for our 2% decrease. It's perfectly fine with me, like we said before. I think the whole system stinks this year with not being able to have a town vote. I will say that, but that's what the governor declared, so that's what we have to live with.
Right. I don't think anybody disagrees with you on that one, for sure. And we'll, we'll make sure Ed and Chris and I, we get the details communicated officially to the Board of Finance and to Barbara so that those, that adjustment is made in the budget appropriately based on our agreement the last meeting, I can't remember. That good for everybody?
Yep.
Whoever was just talking a little bit. I'm gonna keep going. Um, a couple emails from Matt Starr. This is from May 26. It's time to lead by example and show the taxpayers how you've spent these months in confinement preparing to open. Let's see, and Joyce responded back, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow this thread. Then he asked back, do you know if the Board of Selectmen will respond to my prior concerns? Emails, the emails that you sent to this email were discussed during public communication at the May 12 meeting. And you wrote back, so, okay, so I'm clear, any questions or concerns sent to the BOs are now read and discussed at the following BOs meeting and all responses are in the posted minutes. And I think, I think that's it. They're sort of chopped together because it's hard to, it was in a couple of different threads. So the last few months, we haven't spent them in confinement. We've spent them continuing the work of the government and delivering services and, and pivoting and planning and doing a lot of modifications to make sure that we continue to, to deliver services. And I, I'm not sure if there's any other comment, but I don't have any other comment for that email.
Well, I, I just have a question. Have any departments not been able to do full work? And if they are, who are they? What departments? So Park and Recreation, which clearly is an outdoor activity place, you know, they have the town pool. They have things like that. They, obviously they can't open. I would imagine they can't open, or, or can you help us understand, are they going to open? What are their plans? And, and other examples?
Sure. Programs like that, and did I see Leslie on the call? Yes. So, you know, pretty much all of Leslie's programs have been suspended based, due to the pandemic, which is via the executive orders. She's, they've just started allowing back certain things and Leslie's working hard on a lot of different options, ways to deliver the concert series, some other options that she's working on with. Leslie is at the Kent Land Trust for some other use of their land down south of the, south of town to help with the social distancing while trying to deliver some programs for the summer.
Sorry, I wouldn't unmute. Yes, we are, the commission has another meeting on Monday where we hope to have decision about Emery Park and about Camp Kent. And we are working with the land trust to hopefully make the summer concert series work. And we are able now to start on the fee classes. So we are working on restarting those and we are also working sports. Some sports can get started later in the month, so we're working as a region on some options for that.
But Leslie, it would be safe, the, the, the Park and Rec Commission has been meeting on a regular basis, has been operating basically on a regular schedule and directing you as, as normal as can be with obviously pivoting as, as you guys see fit. Is that accurate?
That we not only have had regular meetings, we have had special meetings. This is my fourth Zoom meeting today, so, um, yes.
Okay, thank you. So Jean, are there any other departments, to Matt's question? One, have we been functioning? And it sounds like if Park and Rec is the one that's sort of the poster child for beating, beaten up by this virus, it, it, it's clear to me that their department's been working. And it's clear to me that they are working to come out of this. Are there any other departments that are being hamstrung or, or you can expound on how they are going to come out, full force?
I, you know, I have to say, every department is, has been hugely challenged in the last 16-ish weeks. Everybody, you know, the, our entire world has been completely led by disruption, whether that's disruption of the rules that we live by every day in the town hall and delivering services or, you know, the physical rules, but they've all been making it work. And the modifications that every department has had to do from Donna having, doing massive modifications to keep building permits coming through and, and assisting Stan in getting burn permits to Darlene doing virtual weddings. And we had a wedding that happened out in the front yard so that, you know, she could continue to provide those services. She's done big pivot on the dog licenses. Joyce has done a big pivot on the transfer station permits. Leah, I can't even start to list the, you know, all the stuff that she's had to do. The, she's had like a double plus increase in the food bank usage, getting food just to, to be able to provide the food bank recipients with food has been a massive undertaking because the food, the Connecticut Food Bank at one point pretty much had no food. So this constant pivoting that everybody in this building has been going through and just trudging forward is, has been pretty amazing. And having to stagger the workforce to make sure that everybody in this building stays safe and stays healthy.
Hey, Rick?
Vigil that we had the other night, you know, there's all, we're, we're continuing and have been continuing to deliver the services. You know, with all of these things in place and having to pivot the whole time.
And so coming out, if you will, if we come out or however we come out, are there specific changes that these departments are going to institute or, or are we going to have a sort of a plan, Plan B in case it, you know, comes back? And you know what I mean? I think that's somewhat, Matt, you're here, you can weigh in if you have a question, but I think that, that may be the thrust of, of, of the, of the question.
Hi, Chris.
Yep.
Um, really, my question is, you know, life is going on and everybody is having to change the way they do life. And the town hall, I understand the immediate answer was to close and close the town hall to public. But a few months have passed. I think the general public has had to made changes in their lifestyle so that they can continue to buy groceries, go to different stores. You know, there was a big vigil the other night, the fire department's still doing their services, ambulance still doing their services. And yet the town hall is, remains closed. And I think there are ways that the town hall should be opening, even if it's limited, requiring a mask, requiring hand sanitizer, that kind of stuff, to start providing the normal services, dog licenses, transfer station licenses, building permits. There's no reason that people can't come in and get those services. They have to wear a mask, they'll have to use hand sanitizer, absolutely. They won't be able to share a pen. I, I understand all that. We do that every day to continue to move forward towards some sort of normalcy with this whole process. And my question, my email was to find out, you know, it's been a couple of months and now people are needing services, dog licenses, transfer station permits. And it's, now it's becoming more cumbersome for the public. Oh, you've got to send it in. You got to send it in with a self-addressed envelope, self-stamped envelope. It's costing the residents more money. You know, we were shut down out of using the bulky waste at the transfer station. Took a while. There was no, you know, you limited services, but you didn't limit the staff there. You kept a full staff on board.
No, we didn't. We, we cut the staff.
So that's my question. When is, when is the town going to open up and the town halls start to open and start to provide normal services?
So here, here's an, here's maybe a different question or response to that, Matt. What if, what if, for instance, you know, the, the governor says, yeah, you can open, but, you know, it's a recommendation and, and town halls choose not to, do you find that as a major impediment to public service? If given the fact that it sounds like, at least to me, on the face of it, that every department seems to be reacting, you know, to, to the public. I, I guess I don't understand truly the, the methodology or the motivation of why we should be open if indeed services can be provided. In fact, it may be a, a window into some insight that, that we could, we can provide business with maybe not as much expense with a face-to-face or an officer that going forward.
Chris, I absolutely agree. I, I would rather not go into the town hall if I didn't have to. It's been a few months, though, with technology. Why, why didn't, instead of dog licenses requiring you to get it, mail it in, to get something mailed back, same with transfer station permits, same with building permits, same with everything else, why hasn't that stuff been put out electronically with a fill form on the website? So you could fill it out, pay with a credit card or debit card or whatever, PayPal, and then receive it and stop. Why, why should the public have to go through extra procedures when something easily could be done to improve it? I agree. Improve.
Okay, so that's, that, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good point.
We wouldn't need as much staff at the town hall.
That's a good point. I think, I think, given that, and maybe we stop the discussion here if that, if that satisfies you. Jean, go back and, and talk to departments and saying, you know, because this, Matt, Matt's right. This thing could go on longer, therefore we might have to, you know, do things separately or differently. And, and, you know, I don't think we need to answer it now, but if the departments think about how they electronically can do things and, and, and there is a rationale that it makes sense to do it or rationale that says, no, it's too cumbersome and unfortunately we have to go to, to the old system, I think that would be good for certainly me and, and maybe the public just to understand.
And we're, we're heading in that direction. The timeframe, you know, we have to stay with the time constraints. No matter what dog licenses start happening on a certain date, no matter what transfer station permits start happening on a date, on another date, the pivoting that we were able to do to stand this stuff up. The pivoting that we were able to do to stand this stuff up is, is to meet those dates, but also stay safe and, and also keep moving forward and we're, we're, I want to head in that direction too, Matt. I think we should absolutely, there's, you know, the lion's share of the services that we provide through the mail, we should be able to easily provide, we can easily, not easily, but we can provide them electronically and digitally. And our department meetings have a specific time where we discuss innovation and ideas and I'm going to continue to, to you know, have the department heads, you know, push their boundaries and flip their legs out of the traditional box of what we've always done. And I, and we've been doing that and we're going to continue to, to move forward and do that. So next on, so that was it for public communications and we're going to just dovetail right into reports. I think we talked a little bit about reopening. We discussed with the department head meeting today for a, a physical reopening date and this was after talking with Torrential Health Department, with our town attorney, with many other towns. With the CAG, seeing what CCM, what other towns are doing. Weighing the risks of putting public in the building, the modifications that would be needed. The limitations on how the, the public would have to flow through the building. We're going to continue ramping up and providing all those services and continue on trying to get more digital, but with a September one date for town hall physically opening. August is traditionally a very quiet month. From both Debbie and Patty and Donna, Darlene, we were all, there was a consensus there today about the September first date is a reasonable date and providing, continuing to provide the services that we can provide. We're going to work on putting more information out on the website. We're um, finalizing a social media policy that's going to enable us to, to really pull the town government into the social media sphere. To raise awareness about specific issues, to get that cross-marketing from website to, to social media where you know, so much of the public is, is finding their information. Improve our media, communications, media relationship with the public. Um, and increase the outreach and the, the reach of our standard emergency communications, which right now is, is limited to email. So that's all wrapping around this improving how we communicate out to the public and because we're going to remain physically limited and physically closed to the public. But continuing those services, improving the communications and improving the reach is a really important piece. Just some other COVID-related pieces, our CERT team and, which is um, Bonnie Donnell is our CERT team leader and works under emergency management. They've been activated for a number of missions. They've taken the opportunity of this sort of the lesser training that they're required to do. They've been able to do a Zoom basic training. They've gotten a bunch of new members. They're going to be, we're able to do in-person meetings through DEMIS. We're going to um, focus on getting them a traffic control uh, training under their belt so that they can provide traffic support at something like the vigil that happened the other night. Something like a concert series down at the land trust field so they can really supplement some of these larger events that we're going to see happening in town.
Can I, can I ask? Can I ask a question? Is the CERT director a payable position?
A CERT team leader?
Position? Yes.
Bonnie volunteers for that position.
Okay, alright.
Is that paid?
Oh, and also a comment since we're talking about employees coming back, I have a question. The state of Connecticut, are we going to follow the state of Connecticut policy for employees when they start opening things back up to go back? Because the uh, I don't, I know the town crew has been on rotating shifts and the uh,
Hating shifts?
Are they back full?
Oh yeah, they were.
Never worked.
They came back like ago.
Okay, alright. Um, just, just because the state of Connecticut is now uh, requiring employees work on Saturday, some of them, for overtime. So I guess the social distancing for state employees kind of went out the window also.
Oh, like what change? On that or for?
Uh, uh, repair services and uh, now they're getting ready to go wee weekend uh, mowing on overtime.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're considered essential employees, so they get, they don't have to abide by the governor's COVID rulings.
I hadn't heard.
Yep.
I hadn't heard that that was a trickle-down to.
Okay, yep. Alright.
Um, there's a lot of uh, conference calls, a lot of, a lot of Zoom calls um, that have to do with COVID and the reopening. Our Torrential Health Department has stepped up and they're on the statewide advisory board for, for coming out, for the contact tracing and for the Connecticut reopen, so that's um, adding some calls and um, interactions at a lot of different levels. A lot of um, calls from residents about uh, the number of cases and there's been, people do still continue um, to sort of focus on the number of cases, which is now at eight, I think it hasn't changed in I want to say about a week and a half. And again, that data that comes out of Department of Public Health is, is very limited in its usefulness. And, and this has been a theme throughout since DPH started um, publishing this data. That all it is, is it's a, you know, a snapshot in time. Those eight cases that, that we are, that get reported to us now, still, some of those cases are back from March twenty-third and those, they don't track any of the cases, they don't follow, do the, any follow-up or contact tracing on those cases as to whether those people are still sick, whether they ended up in a rehab facility afterwards. I have a, a good colleague who was, who's ten days intubated at Young Haven and he went to Gaylord Hospital for another, I think it was three weeks, so. But that's not tracked in that DPH data, so it's really just a very sort of static, static number with very limited um, use, so it's, it's really about, you know, how healthy is our community and our, and I think that we have the rural piece in our favor. I'm certainly glad I don't live in New York City or, or another, you know, big city. So, so just to sort of be sensitive to that, that data piece. Um, moving on to other um,
Can I ask a question? Just, just, just along the lines of the theme that, that Matt brought up with respect to um, you know, the opening and such. You know, you mentioned September, is that something that we can, we, we will review at next meeting to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden things feel much better or they've got it contained or it's worse that we can, rather than just sort of a hard and fast deadline. To, to Matt's point, and while I totally respect the departments in, in, in town hall and their safety and everyone's safety. There are many people conducting business where, you know, many on the front lines and then many on the secondary and third lines. I've, I've been, I've been showing real estate through this all and have to take certain precautions like everybody does. So I guess I would just like to add that, that, that as the select, order of selection, I would hope we could just review this next month and take it month by month and, and if indeed it is going to be, you know, the, the sense is that it's going to carry for longer. Then really have some departmental uh, procedures that may, may focus on um, how to streamline things. So that the public really knows that the town hall while working hard is also trying to make it easier on the public. I think that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah, yeah, and definitely, I mean, we're, every day it's, you know, we're pivoting and there's so much information that comes in every single day on this. If, you know, we're going to stay flexible and if, if in two weeks' time, if in a week's time, things start to change drastically, whether that's a second wave or whether that's the governor and, you know, other agencies, Torrential Health Department comes out with, you know, a, a very different picture for phase two in another week, then you're going to have to, you know, jump and, and make some different decisions. I counted up the meetings from last month that I attended and it was about forty-five, so it's, it continues to be just busy doing multiple, multiple different tasks and projects. Everbridge, we're still working towards getting a townwide um, that data cleaned up and then doing a townwide registration, if you will, or emergency communications that would enable us to very quickly on the fly send out a text message to the entire town. Send out an email, send out a voicemail, um, very robust system. We're using the, the the town staff as sort of the um, the uh, Mary and the coal mine, I guess you can, or the, the, what is, what's the word I'm looking for? The example to, to figure out all the um, bumps and anything that we need to fix in the data set and the way that we send out those messages. So that when we do it in this big, big rollout for the town, we'll have all those bugs worked out. So anybody who got one of those emails, I know there's a couple of folks in town government on the call. Who got those registration emails that haven't responded yet, please click the link and respond and register for Everbridge.
I think I did, didn't I?
Um, you did?
Huh?
You did not.
That's not true. I actually went through the process. I don't know if it got me or, oh yeah. I didn't know what the hell it was, but I did it.
I looked just before the meeting and it said you hadn't um, responded.
Maybe, maybe I've done it partway and just don't know, you know, what, what needs to be done, but I have a question with respect to this process. So give me an example aside from an ice jam like behind me or, or a COVID virus. Are we talking uh, statewide stuff or problems? Are we just talking a tree down on, on Elizabeth Street? What, 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 what do you perceive as a manner in which you're going to alert townspeople? Because quite honestly, it seems maybe redundant to do it on a state level or a federal level. If indeed, you know, I get these alerts from my weather station and I get these alerts from, you know, from all different apps.
So, and I'll have David chime in here. Emergency communications are all about redundancy. Especially when you're talking to the public, you, you don't ever rely on well, we're going to do it this one way in an emergency and that's going to hit everybody. You, you actually build in and plan for a redundancy model when you're doing emergency communications to the public. Because you, you don't know if, what um, the public is, is subscribed to or where they get them from, so you do want to have redundancy. It can be inconvenient sometimes to get, you know, an email and a text message or an email from the weather, you know, Albany folks in, for the weather from.
But what are you, what are they going to be sending me? That the army men are moving in or a tree down on Elizabeth Street? That's what I'm wondering.
Yes.
Is it Kent-specific stuff or is it national and state stuff?
It can be both. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, yeah. Primarily what, what we're talking about with the Everbridge system is going to be for our local decision-making. Some people who are, who are signing up um, you know, haven't been in the overall, you know, database al- already, but actually a lot of, a lot of people are and they're already signed up to get uh, under the CT alert system and so we'll actually initially have quite a few, you know, people within our area who've signed up and, and part of that. Our primary focus is going to be Kent-specific. Um, we're not determining, um, like you, like if you get the alerts on your cell phone from like the wireless alerts, a lot of those are, are, are nationally even determined systems. For us, if, if it's a tree that's going to be blocking a road and it's a, you know, a dead end with a large number of people on, on, on one side and they may be, you know, because there's wires, they're going to be stuck there for eighteen hours. We might, we might target just that little section and give them a specialized um, item. Um, when you talk about, you know, that, that, like you talk about the ice jams as an example, that doesn't necessarily impact everybody. Um, so one of the nice things is that we can do very specific areas. Some of the, some of the things when we talk about like what, what had occurred where it would have been helpful with COVID is, you know, you know, the newsletter only goes so far. Um, so what we, if we had this in place earlier, we might have done some townwide messaging for things that were, that were urgent, that we really want to make sure everybody got and, and, and far and wide. And um, you know, you might get in a weather, you know, but again, only it would be a major thing and we would, what we would be doing is giving you your Kent-specific details. So yeah, it's nice that the NWS might alert your phone that, you know, uh, you know, a flash flood or something coming. The aftermath, there might be things that we need to say. There's a shelter here, contact this, you know, this number um, if you have a problem, things, things like that, that we want to go wide with. Um, and it's designed unlike kind of just dropped in your email box like any old message. It's designed specifically as, as, as really an emergency alerting um, system. That's really the primary use.
Do other towns, do other towns, I'm sorry, David, do other towns in this area use, use this?
Yeah, I don't have the exact list, but a, but a large number of towns do use um, specifically Everbridge because they can do it under the, the, the overall state system. Some other communities use some different products, um, you know, like Code Reds, another one, some of them pay and, and do that. But, but the nice, you know, the Everbridge taps in with a, with a really big database, so um, if you, if you can, you know, that's the way to go. But it's definitely a, a standard in Connecticut.
I, I'm sorry to, to interrupt, but I, I understand the mo, the, the system. It's an email system and it's an emergency one and I, I get all that. And, and maybe I'm making it too simplified, but basically all it is, is an emergency contact system, correct? My question is,
Simplify.
Who in Kent is going to make the call that a tree on Elizabeth Street is, is important enough to tell everybody? Who in Kent is going to be uh, making the decision that says, oh, there's a flash flood coming because the dam broke up in Falls Village? Who is, who, what group and what, and who's going to be sitting up at all hours waiting for this to be able to push this information to people? Is really what I, I'm trying to get at and, and, and understand.
Got it. So, so, so typically um, to this, to thinking, thinking to most of, most of the towns that I, you know, that I, that I know of and the way that they handle it, it's typically the emergency management team. Um, it would be, it would be, you know, that would make the decision and they typically want, um, if you read in some, some of the guidance on these things. They actually, you know, they don't, they don't want just anyone to go and send a message. They usually want it to be done by either the chief executive, the emergency management director, the fire chief, and a, a name, you know, someone who's a notable emergency figure, that's a trusted name in that role to then, to then go and send it out. And usually it is a, a collective decision. It's not like I, you know, roll out of bed at three in the morning and go, hey, there's a tree, a tree down, I'm just going to go do it. There's usually a process and it, you know, sort of, sort of bringing together the emergency management team. And it, all the way down to, hey, this is kind of what this is, this message is going to say. Do we miss any key, you know, is there a key point that I missed? Do you want to put it in? It's all done very rapidly. It's, um, and it's really some of the reasons why, you know, things like the virtual EOC and the, we have a, have an emergency management team email address that we've set up. Things like that are, are always kind of, I think they're going to, they were, they were stood up during COVID, but they're going to stick because those are long time. Those are like long-term best practices as to how you get, you rapidly communicate with a team and within ten minutes you've got an alert out and, and it's going out to everybody. Um, and, and I think the key is um, just, the key is that you, you don't just send them out to send them out. You send them out when there's a, there's some element of, 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 of life safety and really needing to, because if every week you got a, to your point, if every week you got a message, eventually you ignore the message. You want to, you want to, you want to make sure that you're doing them when it, when it truly counts for people.
And Chris, if there's a, um, there's a tiered approach when you're modeling emergency communications where Everbridge can provide that, that tiered. It's not just email. Everbridge is able to send out text messages, it's able to call phone numbers and leave voicemail messages, so you're hitting even people who don't use email, don't use texts, don't, you know, use these other, other capabilities. It's really, it's just constantly filling a gap. It, it's extremely robust and, and we'll give you a drive-through at some point, but the, the monitoring that David and Eric do twenty-four seven, they're, you know, they're, we have weather nerds, we have homeland security nerds, Department of um, homeland security, um, Department of, um, Public Health. They're, they're monitoring and, and keyed into all of these levels of information that's coming in. It's through the Connecticut Information Center, this Fusion Center that brings in all sorts of law enforcement data. Um, so, and they monitor that twenty-four, twenty-four seven. So there are eyes and ears into all this stuff that you were sort of asking.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I really do. I, I'm just really not, um, I'm not, uh, really truly understanding whether this is, is just tying us into a bigger system or this is something that's really beneficial for the, specifically for the town. And I know that you can parse it out. Uh, but, you know, if Rick finds a tree or gets called for a tree down, you know, what, what is the qualification for a, a, a text out to a group or, you know, tech tech? Because I think honestly, if, if it were such that it was, uh, a roads washed out or some things like that, that to me is a beneficial component, albeit not a virus, albeit not, you know, a meteor coming at us, but something that is, is very specific for town, that would be very, uh, beneficial.
We're not just going to be, you know, the, the bonus is that that, that Everbridge is the, also the statewide provider for emergency notifications. But our system is going to be our Kent system and we will, we are, we have complete flexibility and freedom to set up whatever protocol that the town emergency management feels based on best practices and standards. What level meets, meets a, you know, a text? What level meets just an email? What level? So that, that's all to be worked out and Everbridge will provide, you know, their, their, um, their view on that as, you know, they are experts because this is all they do. But yeah, we, we have, we have total control over how we send, what we send, when we send.
Okay. And David, um, so how do you, you see, I just want to be clear that you're coordinating with like, uh, nine-one-one and the local Kent Volunteer Fire Department and Rick and anyone else who might be involved uh, to make determinations just so that the town knows that we have all these entities feeding the system.
Yeah. And it, you know, we, and we've been doing that. That's, um, and, you know, I, I plan to continue that on, on, on any of the major decisions, you know, things, things like this are going to be, you know, largely, um, you know, well, and we, we've even gone, um, you know, if you take some of this reopening, like we're going and, and adding on to, you know, our emergency management team calls, other, other departments as needed. We, I'm really trying to take a holistic approach to things. Um, and make sure that we're involving any partners, um, within town, um, you know, within town government that, that are needed. And I would do the same with this. So someone like Rick, Rick is, Rick has regularly, um, been a part of the discussions on, on just, just about everything that's been going on from, you know, from, from, from the beginning on, you know, on COVID as an example. Um, same with, uh, there, there've been some weather events that have pushed through. I've made sure that, that I looped the entire emergency management team, Rick being included on that, on, on any of that information as it comes in. Um, so if, if we ended up in a situation where we needed to send a message out, um, you know, he'd be a part of that because that'd be one of the, if you take this, it's trees as an example, I mean, that's, you know, that if, if there's wires involved, then, then we've got, um, you know, EverSource as part of it. But, but Rick's also a component of that. And, you know, so we would be determining, and just as an example, we'd be determining, is it, do we think it's going to be cleared in, you know, four hours? Well, if it's, if it's going to be cleared in four hours, maybe we don't need to send one out. Do we think it's going to be eighteen hours and additional, you know, items may occur? Okay, maybe we'll need to send this out to that area or, or wider or something to that effect. Just, just giving the example, you know, since you brought up Rick as to sort of how, um, you know, how he would, um, how he would be tied in. Um, but again, if, if it had any other departments, um, you know, we, we, you know, we would do that. So.
Right now on the single emergency management E M team email, that is a group email. There's, um, Ed is on, um, Mary Ann, Gary Hawk, Tim Limbo, Spahnie Donzillas. Those are EMS and senior leadership of the fire department. Rick is on that. I'm on that. Even Donna is on that as we were walking through this, the, um, the reopening phase one stuff. Um, so there's, you know, it's a wide swath in one single email. There's not, you know, picking and choosing. It's, everybody gets the email out to the emergency manager. And so it's a, you know, one stop. So it is really a holistic approach. Ed.
And I just a question, and David, you're, you're doing this as a volunteer also?
Yeah, it's on, it's.
You're not getting compensated for your time?
Not right, no, not currently. It's always been.
Thank you. No, that's fine. It's just been questioned to me by members of the town asking if he was being compensated. Okay.
So moving on, um, to Lake Warmog boat replacement. So just prior to the, the heavy onset of the pandemic, I attended a meeting with, of the Lake Warmog Authority with Jim Britton of Washington and Tim Angevine of Warren. And they gave us a quick three-hour, um, brief in on all this Lake Warmog and all the work that they do to keep Lake Warmog safe and healthy. And at the very end of it, um, after learning more about plants and little tiny things that they have on a farm there to, to keep everything growing, they mentioned, um, uh, boat replacement for the authority. There's a boat that they use on the lake and it was needing replacement and um, the funding is split up in the, in the way that, um, between the three towns. And then the pandemic sort of took hold and it did not get added to the twenty-twenty-one budget. But after, um, a discussion with the treasurer, it was determined that there's enough surplus in this fiscal year to facilitate a budget transfer to satisfy this obligation, which is $10,000. So as a part of the regular fiscal year, um, closure, she'll be preparing the budget, all the budget transfers. Um, I believe, Barbara, are you still online? I believe it will be in July, um, along with all the others necessary. Um, as they come up for the end of the fiscal year. Did you want to add anything? Did I miss anything, Barbara?
Uh, no, you explained it properly from my perspective. And yes, budget transfers usually happen in July after I have all the final figures for the year.
Okay. This is a budget request that was supposed to be in this budget, right? For next year.
The twenty-twenty-one budget. Yep.
Okay. I see. So, okay. Got it.
And it was my mess. And I apologize for that.
Well, I, I'm on the authority and I know that ten, ten, twelve years ago, we bought, bought a boat. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Gene, we are a minor portion compared to Warren and Washington. Right? Money wise, because they're, they dock it over there. It's actually, I think they do everything over there and the, uh, I believe the police officer, there's a police officer who actually runs the, the boat. I also understand that fifty grand's not going to make, I think it's fifty, right? Yeah, fifty grand. Uh, it's not going to buy a boat. I don't, so I believe they're going to try to refurbish the existing boat or if not sell the, the existing boat and try to make do somehow with fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So, um, I'm just surprised they haven't come, you know, I haven't been to the meetings for a, a good while. I'm surprised they haven't asked for a bigger budget, but they haven't.
I can follow up with the, um, what was his name? Ed Bermer, I believe. I can follow up with him.
Well, we don't need to spend more, but it's.
Um, we've been holding weekly department head meetings. I think it's been a good opportunity to get everybody in the same Zoom room, um, once a week and just talk through sort of what the other departments are doing, um, as we continue to head out hopefully of, of this pandemic. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the standing items is innovation. I think, um, that we, it's important that we all push ourselves to innovate. We've been, you know, forced to innovate and pivot throughout this whole thing. And I think this is sort of a perfect opportunity to, just to continue to, to think about the way that we deliver services and the way that we produce our work product in new ways. Um, everybody has been, you know, one of the great things that's come out of this is that C C M cost, all of the organizations that sort of flow through all of the departments. Um, they've really been making available a ton of webinars and Zoom meetings to, to think about new ways to deliver government services. And it's, it's, it's been a a tiny little sort of spark in, in what's, you know, been going on. Um, residency trooper update.
Jane?
Yeah.
Can I just, can I just make, make a point, uh, to, to that direction? Is there anything in, in the Board of Selectmen's Office or the Selectmen's Office that you have specific ideas as to, for this, your department to lead by example as to what we can do, specifically you can do and Joyce can do, uh, along the lines of, of streamlining. So as an example, do you have, uh, or, or are you thinking about maybe can come to the table that's in the next month or so to say, yeah, now to rent this, to, to rent the Swift House or to rent the community house? Or to do something like that, you can do that online. Um, because I think honestly, if, if indeed we're asking all the departments to think that way, obviously, you know, it would be great to see how we could do it from, from your office.
Sure. So this is a small step, but I think it's a step. There's actually a, the new transfer station permit form online that folks would normally download and they'd have to fill out by hand. It's a fillable PDF. It's not, they can't submit it via, I mean, they could, we, we, you know, can do more designing and more refining of it, but that's a tiny little step that we made forward that was relatively easy to do. And I think it's, you know, if that's more of a convenience than it is a true step forward. But, um, but yeah, I, there's, there's, there's more that is in my mind. I don't, you know, I.
Just, let's just take that as, as an example. So presently somebody coming in and wants a, a, a transfer station. They have to, in the old days that we'd come up to Joyce and get one, correct?
Yeah, or download one from the website, fill it out by hand and send it in.
Or go to the transfer station and get one? No?
Yeah, they could. Yep.
So there were three ways?
Yep.
Okay. Are we streamlining it? So there's only one way and it's online and it's through a, you know, a PayPal system?
It's, that's a, it's a bigger step because we have to, we would work with Barbara on the finance side of it and Civic Plus, um, they have a lot of products and that's our website vendor. They have a lot of different products and modules that we can, that we should be looking at. And Darlene and I've talked about it, um.
Well, again, just staying on point with that, if we could just solve that. And then that as a model at, at which we could not only convince ourselves that, wow, that was a challenge to do, but it worked out. Uh, but also convince the town that, you know, that's what it's going. In fact, what we don't want to have happen is the town members to go to get way far out in front of us on technology and we're catching up. And so if, if we could just take the transfer station pass and make it such that you can pay online and get it done, it, that might be a helpful step for all departments and, and public.
A good, some, you know, doable project to, to focus on for that. As a, as a, as a sample. Um, residency trooper, um, so he can, he continues to step up the speed enforcement along Main Street because it's, you know, it was, it was as though the, it problem increased because the roads were, um, less populated and now it's continuing to increase because people are getting out more. So, um, again, that's the single resource that we have, but he was doing, we had a call from somebody yesterday saying there were a lot of cars coming in from, um, New York State, just really just racing through Bridge Street. So he stepped up that speed enforcement over in that area. And sort of dovetailing into that, um, the pedestrian safety, we're, we're moving forward with that. The um, crosswalk, no parking and striping. Permit applications are under review with D O T. We're hoping to move on those fairly quickly. So that's going to involve some no parking spaces on either side of, um, a couple of the crosswalks where it's illegal to park within twenty-five feet of a crosswalk, which I didn't know. Um, so we'll be doing some striping. So you're going to see sort of what seem to be fairly big swaths that are going to have the, um, and, you know, a circle outline with the diagonal striping, which is all required, very specific, how many, how wide they have to be, how far apart they have to be. So we have no control over that. Um, but that's going to keep a more open path on, um, to the crosswalks and better sightlines to the crosswalks. And, um, and those will include some no parking signs as well as a sort of second tier of reminding the public that they can't park there. And once those all go in, that's going to, then they're going to be able to, you know, reinforce that, um, no parking in those, in those areas. Um, and then that will, will all get dovetailed, um, you know, into the larger streetscape project. Chris, you were going to say something?
I just have a question. So, uh, picking up on the thread of what you said, there is an application into the town. I mean, into D O T.
There are, how many, how many do we have in Rick? Four, three? I, I forget. There's multiple.
So, so we the town make, make an application for something that they, that they do normally? I don't get that.
We have to imply for what's called an encroachment permit to D O T to ask, um, basically to, to be permitted to, um, paint these lines on the roadway, on the state roadway. Because they don't, they no longer do it.
They don't, so it's ours, we're going to be painting it?
Yes.
So we're waiting for approval for that?
Yes.
Okay. Now I got the thread. I got the ball. Um, and how long does that approval take? When do you anticipate striping?
When we get the permits back.
So I have a question. So, so there's no rule that says we have to put the striping there?
No, but a couple of months ago, we all talked.
No, I know. I, I know what you're saying. But so there's never been a rule saying the striping had to be there. It could be just a simple sign. Crosswalk sign from the state of Connecticut?
I don't, I'm not, I'm not following you.
So the state of Connecticut, in other words, is giving me, giving the town of Kent a permit to paint crosswalks on a state road?
Nope. The crosswalks are already there.
Right. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So what we're.
No, it's not. Yeah, it's not a crosswalk. It's to.
Right. That's what, the parking lines. Correct. But they want us to pay for that now?
Yeah, they don't provide that painting.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Is that, I mean, that's what we were.
I don't know. That's very possible. I, I don't know. That's why I'm just asking. I don't, I didn't know. And also are we going to set the, uh, the fees for parking or only, we can't do that on state roads, only on town? Because I see Kane just sent their own parking violation rules. With fees?
Um, I, I.
I don't think we can because that's not on state road. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we can either.
Okay. All right.
So I'm sorry, Chris, you had a, you had.
No, I just, I, I didn't, I didn't really understand the process. And so the only thing you didn't answer was the timeline and that's because you don't know, because the OT doesn't tell you their timeline. They just tell you, you either have it or you don't, right? All right, got it.
You know, it's a priority to get this stuff in place. Um, so as soon as we get them, we did get um, three of the permits back for the year's speed signs. So that's good news. Those were placed today.
I saw that. One warned me.
Yay. So there, right now, um, there are basically the three of the four gateways. We're waiting for the last permit for the one on South Main Street to come in, but the other three out on three forty-one, East and West, and then North on Route seven are, were all placed today. And so in a month, we'll, um, I'll have a, you know, some data to, to report back on. Um, the, you know, the whatever, what the, the signs collect. So we'll have a little bit of a, you know, a viewscape into what's going on there. Um, Rick, can you just talk briefly about the, um, the limit set, the speed limit set that the state require? It's part of the permit that it.
When they're on a state road, we can't use any flag.
When they're on a state road, we can't use any flashing lights that feature on them. And the upper limit has to be set within 20 miles of the speed limit so that, that you don't have people trying to see how fast they can go flying through there. So like the ones where it's 35 will be, they're set for 54, where it's 30, it's, uh, what's, 49?
It's a math.
They're all reset before they went out, so.
And we'll have, you know, one month's data, um, to take a look at, which I think-
Well, that's good, thank you.
We'll check it before that to make sure they're recording correctly, but-
Right. Right. And in the interest of time, that's pretty much all I have on my report. Um, Christopher here at a Swift-
Swift House. We convened a meeting with Zan Charity and, uh, Marge McAvoy, and we, um, we have, uh, selected Zan as the chairperson. We have, um, determined to do a number of things. One, monitor, really what we're, what our initial idea was, was to, um, monitor and finalize the remediation of, of the pests, and Zan can expound on that in terms of where exactly are we are. And there's also going to be a, my role specifically is to figure out what, what to do long-term with, with the terms of interest for the Swift House. And then we will convene the three of us and come to the selectman with a, with a plan. Zan, do you want to add anything about the, the actual, um, Bob, Bob's process?
Yeah.
Need to unmute, unmute. There you go. Bottom corner, there you go.
The process is going well. All of the bats are out of the attic. They have come in and cleaned the attic, the apartment upstairs, the basement where all of-
Zan, can you speak a little louder or into the mic a little more? Please?
They have cleaned out, uh, the attics, the apartment upstairs, the basement where the litter was from the animals, and that has, I mean, made a huge difference. They're still trapping squirrels. They've taken several, a number away, and they're taking them all the way up into Cornwall so that they're far enough away that they won't find their way home, hopefully. I was there today walking around just to see what things were, how things were going. And I did notice that there's a hole through the stone foundation in the old part of the building that I'll call them in the morning and bring to their attention, because I hadn't noticed that before. And there's some insulation that has been taken out around there. So I don't know if squirrels are getting into the annex part, but they're doing a good job and it already looks a lot better and it's quieter inside. No, no chirping squirrels in the, in the walls.
And do you want to just touch on the, the concept of, of all the different groups, different professions that we've asked to come or sort of get estimates and ideas?
We're in the process of, of getting, reaching out to, um, local contractors, especially those with experience in restoring old houses, and asking them to advise us about what they feel are the most important priorities to address immediately, and then do some long-term planning on other things that, you know, might go into another capital budget at another time, or we would seek a grant for, or find some way to address. And also we'll be, you know, in addition to general contractors, we'll be talking to plumbers. I, I noticed that the furnace is very old, the instructions are from the 1980s, um, early 80s. I don't know enough about furnaces to know how good it is, but I'm expecting to check in with the Chamber because they have offices there and see what their experience has been about heat in the wintertime. So we're trying to do a pretty thorough list of all the different systems and we'll know a lot more at a later date, just beginning that process.
Can I just add one, just a, just a little bit of advice, that when you're getting ready to do any of this work, make sure you have proper permits from the building official and the fire marshal, because that's a public building, so.
We're not getting ready to do any work at this point, we're just-
No, I understand that, but when you are, you're, you're going to need permits.
That's, that's a good point, Donna. But just to reiterate what Zan's saying is, charges not to actually do any work, aside from getting rid of all the pests. Our job is really to, at this point, uh, to gather information on, one, the condition of the building, uh, and that would dovetail into, uh, the, the Board of Selectmen and, and the town and specifically deciding what and how they want to move forward with it, at which point, if there is a separate building committee, most definitely, they would have to go through that process.
Well, we would make a recommendation about what we, you know, based on our investigations, about what we think the priorities should be. And we do have a somewhat larger budget now that the Board of Finance gave us a little bit more money that we need to use in the coming fiscal year. So we'll, we'll be making a recommendation and going ahead with some of that work in the short term, but then there'll be long-term planning as well. Any other questions?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Zan. And thank you, Joyce, for, for pulling up information on the steep grants and the historical perspective on it. It's been very helpful.
We're still trying to find the actual steep grant documents, because although we have a spreadsheet about, of payments, it just lists like assignment number two, number three, number four, and it doesn't say what's included in that. So we're trying, we're still in this phase of researching what was actually done the last time there was major work done to the building. And then that will help us inform what has taken place in recent years and what still needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thanks. I don't have anything to report on the Finance Review Committee we have, we still haven't met, and there's been no request from a KVFD to, you know, to rejuvenate that at this point. So what is not on the agenda, but, uh, but is sort of part and parcel, uh, with the streetscape that we're going into, and it was discussed a little bit by Peter Jensen in his communications, um, is the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce and I, I work with the board pretty frequently. I think, uh, we, the town, need to make sure that we are very responsive to, uh, the, uh, needs of the, of the Chamber in general, but specifically in the, the, the town and how it's operated. I was dismayed to watch over in Litchfield, when they opened up outside dining, that they started charging permits, uh, for, you know, for, for the, for the restaurants to do so, uh, which they quickly redacted and, and backed off of. But I don't think they meant any harm, they just going through procedures. But I think what I, what I'm saying is, I would hope that we in Town Hall can put our brains together and say, okay, how do we make it easier and how do we make things go smoothly for them? Specifically when we start striping lines for parking, specifically when we, um, talk about streetscape and, um, you know, Swift House and many other sort of pieces of this. So I'd like to, um, you know, I, I talked to Hyrum Williams, who is the, uh, individual on the board, who is the liaison, if you will, uh, to, to, to the town. And, um, you know, they're, they're putting together a concept and an idea to help them brand better, uh, or sort of in a different perspective. So I, I, I think we want to be sensitive and reactive to that in the manner in which we can.
Thanks. So moving on, Ed, you want to give us an, an update on streetscape?
Uh, the survey is 75% complete, I was told, and there's nothing to update more until we get the survey and then start moving on to the state of Connecticut and doing all that stuff. So it's moving along.
And the survey is, is specifically to identify what, Ed?
Property lines.
Property lines, okay. Where they intersect with DOT?
Yeah, the extra things that were never done in the beginning, in the first one that the state required all along, that I guess somebody didn't realize they needed, so.
Gotcha.
So it's property lines, they don't need rear lines, but they need all the front lines and all the easements and all that stuff. So it's a lot of extra work to be done. And I believe Jean knows more about, uh, cost ideas, but I don't, so. But she may not know exactly what the cost extras are, but that should be covered under the grant, so.
Well, Barbara, did, did, has the committee asked for more money for, for surveying costs?
The committee? Not any more money than you've already appropriated for it.
Um, so nothing, nothing more out of the capital plan at this point?
You, are you asking me what checks have been released?
Well, specifically, if, if I recall correctly, we had $100,000 in the capital plan, and that's where we took the money from to do the initial surveying. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So it is my understanding that additional, um, surveying is actually underway? Has a request been for the payment of that?
No.
Okay. Alright, Ed, so I think your committee better make sure that you're, you know, you're actually asking for those funds.
Well, I, I believe they had sent it to Gary and Jean had talked about it, so I'm not sure, or Gary talked to-
There's been more than enough money appropriated for the project. It's covered.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what we were assured ahead of time, too, as a committee.
Okay, good. So it's just a, just one double check.
Because otherwise, the project wouldn't happen if the extra survey work never got done, so.
Oh, no, I got it. So, um, can you give us timeline? What, what, so let's just-
No. I can't give you, I can't give you a timeline, because once this survey stuff gets done, the state said it could be three to four months for the person to go over the survey and the plans from the, and the, and the drawings, because they have to be redone, sort of, once all the property lines are put on the map, then if there's any changes to be done, so that can be seen.
So-
So they're still looking, luckily, they're still hoping to get something in the ground before December, though.
Okay. So I, I would imagine if we're doing the surveying, we submit it to them, they've got to make sure that, that, that actually jives with their surveys?
No, starts, the state is not doing any surveys. I'm talking about our engineers for the sidewalks. And then it has to go to get approved by the state of Connecticut group for the sidewalks. And they say that they're very slow on looking at documents. So Mike Gavel is working very hard to push that along, once that happens.
Okay.
And is there any, um, I know that Mike needed to sort of connect with Anna Bergeron up at-
Oh, yeah, I think they've already done the walkthrough with them and they're all ready to go. We're just waiting for the survey to get done, which we knew was going to take a while. And then the engineer will have to do or change whatever he needs to change to present it up to the state of Connecticut. And then, then it will be up to them to decide how quickly it gets done. And I think the committee members, John Johnson, um, Jack Nelson, and Mike Gavel will make sure the push will be on to get this thing started as soon as possible. You're welcome.
Thanks, Ed. Um, Barbara, Treasurers Report, reported to Treasurer.
I have a written report, but I'm just going to submit it to be appended to the minutes so everybody can read it when they read the minutes. The only two items of note on it are that the Kent Affordable Housing Grant has been submitted, so now we're in the wait, and let's see if we get the grant phase. And the other thing of note is that, trying to be innovative, we are, my office is transitioning to online platform for time records. So hopefully that will make everybody's life a little bit easier and make the fact that I don't have any staff right now in my office, a little less of a burden.
It was really all I had. I think this is going to be great. It's going to streamline and, and connect the, the time cards right to the software. It's, I think it's-
So is this a software enhancement that we just, that you paid for, Barbara, or is it just a different platform altogether?
It's a software enhancement to existing software.
Excellent. Nice work.
All integrates together, which is a-
Nice work.
And then at some point, when I'm, got the year-end process all under my purview and on track, I'm going to start doing some research about how we can streamline taking payments at the Town Hall within the departments.
Excellent.
I think in the right direction. Tax refunds, thanks Barbara. You're all, you're good there, Barbara?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tax refunds, we have, um, 12, we, Debbie ran one up here midday, um, so we have a total of 12 tax refunds to, to approve. These are sort of, um, they're on a request for abatement or refund of property taxes, some are vehicle, but I'm going to make a motion to approve the 12 tax refunds as submitted by the tax collector.
I'll start it.
Question? What, what's, what's the rough total? Excellent, thank you.
Not so much. Any other questions, comments, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, under new business, um, Conservation Commission Solar Project, I see Connie Manus on the line. You need to, you need to do Debbie's request. I'm sorry?
You, oh, I thought you were moving away from the tax collector. No.
Did I miss something?
The small, the, the small balances have to be taken off?
Oh, shoot, I'm so sorry. Sorry, sorry. Lost my, lost track, I got lulled into the next thing. Um, so here's, um, I'll just read you the letter. In accordance with the Town of Kent Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Section 18-8 dated 1/2009, the tax collector is authorized to retain overpaying taxes if such credit balances are less than $5. The 32 accounts on the attached list dated 6/3/2020 have balances from $2 to $5, totaling $55.49. I request that the Board of Selectmen approve adjusting all of these credit balances to zero and the $55.49 be transferred to tax refunds line 130 through 320, Debbie DeVoe. So I'll make that in the form of a motion to accept the, um, the credit balances request. Appropriate, Debbie?
It's small balances, yes.
Small balances request, thanks.
Back it.
Thank you.
Does that motion also includes the, the, uh, the adjustment on the line item of, of the amount of money, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all included.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
As long as I'm unmuted, can I just ask a question going back to Barbara about the, the time cards being online?
Yeah.
We discussed this at the meeting this afternoon, and there was a problem about part-time people would have to come back to the office to sign off on these time cards. Is that problem then fixed?
That's, uh, to my knowledge, that's never been a problem. Nobody has to come back to the office to sign anything.
Wonder, oh, well, we had to sign in, and in order for me to do that, I have to come back to the office because I don't have a town computer at my disposal at home.
You can authorize it anytime during your regular working hours.
Okay. I thought I had to wait a couple of days after. I was, that, wonderful. My question.
I'm sorry?
That answers my question.
Great. I see Wendy Murphy is back on, and- I see Wendy Murphy is back on, and we have Connie. I'm going to turn the floor over to y'all for an update or any, you know, any information you have on this sort of investigation or exploration for this project.
Thanks, Jean. I really am going to turn this straight over to Wendy. She has done really a ton of work on this initiative and, and so I'm glad that she's here in video. It's loud in my house, too, so.
Well, I guess I should ask, did anybody read the documents? I think Joyce gave you
I did.
Each a copy of what this program is, the Green Bank's Municipal Assistance Program. Did you all get a copy? Did anybody look at it?
I did not look at it.
Or are you totally on for this?
I looked at it.
Well, the ba, the basic idea is there is a program that's just been started in 2020 in January called the Municipal Assistance Program to provide solar for municipal buildings in small towns all over Connecticut. The basic way it works, as I understand it, is they, you submit the information about how much electricity each of the buildings uses. They do, you give them your account number, they do an aerial survey first from Google Maps or something. Then they kind of get a rough idea of which buildings are going to be profitable or have a good return on investment. And then they, they carry forth the whole program for 20 some years. They put in the solar, they maintain it, they repair it, they, they engineer it, and they take half of the money that the town saves on the electric bill, and they, they give half the money to the town, and the rest goes to pay for their investment so that at the end of 20 years they, they have paid themselves back. But it seems like a fabulous program. I don't know about you, but I just, one day I just couldn't stand it anymore. I went past the fire department for the 21st time and thought, why isn't there solar on that roof? And I started poking around and darned if I didn't find this. This program that's just been introduced, the State of Connecticut doesn't do much to promote it, but the Town of Coventry has already put eight of their municipal buildings under this program. They think it's just found money. They're delighted with it. It's all supervised by the Green Bank, which is, was initiated through Yale Department of Forestry, interestingly enough. It was an idea, and first it was applied to residential properties, and I actually took advantage of that and got a residential set up here last year, and it just, it just makes you feel good to be doing it this way. But for the town, it's, it's a huge saving. So what I had to do was find out how much the fire department spent on electricity, how much the Senate, the sewage treatment plant spent. Go right down the list, community house, town hall. Some of the buildings are better oriented than others. Some, they might have to put in a ground mount. Ideally, it's on a roof. The fire department is ideally situated for the roof installation. But this is, so what we've done without committing the town to anything was to submit an application for the school, the Kent Center School, the fire department, five or so totally municipal buildings. Everybody we did this for, we went to them directly and said, is it okay with you? Went to Jean, it just didn't get in the, in the discussion you had two weeks ago, but, so we just went ahead and made this the application. If you don't like what you get or what they propose, you're not committed.
Sounds great.
But I, I think you really should read this documentation. Talk to people in Coventry, the first selectman there, who is a great promoter of this. The Green Bank has an excellent reputation, as best I know. And that's basically what this is all about. There, there is right now just two years of funding that's been passed. So the idea is, I wanted to get our application in at the front of the line because I think once this has come to be known, it's going to be hard to get the services. It takes a long time to get the all of the electrical stuff figured out and all the engineering reports and so on. So at the very best, this wouldn't start happening as a physical way to deal with electricity until 2021. But we have now six or more months to get it rolling. They would come, the Green Bank would come and make a presentation to the selectmen or to the town or however you want to do it, once they studied all of our buildings. So that's, that's what I'm here to promote.
You're here.
So question? But I would really urge you to read the documents.
So the only question?
For example, I think Kent Center, I think, spends over $40,000 a year in electrical bills.
Yep.
I mean, imagine if you got that in half. And the fire department is, I don't know, six or 7,000? Or maybe it's more. I forget. I mean, I did the whole, I did all of the buildings. And we're also looking into the Oriole Library, which isn't exactly a municipal building, but they are, they're kind of slippery-slidy about what their definition municipal is, so the library is, is on the list as well.
Exciting.
Yeah, I, I think so. It's a killer that they don't advertise this. I mean, if I hadn't just stumbled on this, I wouldn't know about it.
So what are the next steps? I see the paragraph at the end.
The, the next steps are just to wait and hear from the the woman who is managing all this. She's got all the paperwork. She sent a very complimentary note and said, you know, you've taken us already a long way with this data, and you'll be hearing from us. But right, and they do, the next step is they do a kind of desk survey the engineers do, and they look at the buildings. I had to give them the right address, and they go and find the, you know, the aerial surveys based on that. They could see where the building stands, where, where the sun angle is for the best number of months. The Kent Center School is, is a bit of an exception, not an exception exactly, but they need new, a new roof, and so it's, they are thinking about that. You, you don't want to put solar on top of a bad roof. So, but they're, they have a timeline now for replacing that roof in two years, I think, something like that. So it could be worked out.
Okay.
Great.
We'll keep this as a standing item on the agenda, Wendy, and month to month.
Yeah, but I beg you, I beg you all to read up on this a little bit, or, or call me up and I'll give you direct stuff to tell you, but
Will do.
That's the best way to go about this at this point.
Okay.
And, oh, the one thing I didn't say was, I like the idea of Kent being in the foreground forefront of going solar. I, you know, we're, we're to do a clean energy state here, and here's our opportunity to, to be a leader.
That's right.
So that's it.
That's it.
Great.
Getting that.
It's kind of. Thank you.
Hold them there. Um, so on to old business. We already talked about cell tower. That was just redundancy. There's nothing new on the Club Getaway Sewer slash easement because they're just sort of in a holding pattern. And the last is policy and procedure manuals, so Joyce had, Joyce, can you come off of mute and just help fill in the gaps here? So there's been a number of full-time employees that have not been able to take their paid time off during the past several months due to COVID. And there's, they, they would like us to consider taking, so I'm sorry, taking the, their what's the word I'm looking for? The deadline for using the vacation days and extending it out to did you want it, did you have a specific time? Joyce, timeframe that you, that, that you're proposing?
I did not. The union contract does go to October 31st for their extension of five days, but they also have requested that that five days be increased because some of them have more than the five days.
Okay, so if you, if you look at that handout, Chris and Ed, that was in the packages. So there are four employees that have met the maximum 60 days in their bank time and have have the following number of days that will be forfeited if not used by June 30th, 2020. So it ranges from, so I'll just go through the list. Leslie has two, Donna has eight, Joyce has 26, Rick has 30. And then in the Teamster, on the Teamster contract side with the road crew, they can use up to, currently use up to five vacation days carryover to October 31st. And that would be Pete Bernard has 17 days, Jerry LaPointe has one and a half days, John Lindsay nine, and Mike Civic six days. So the, the question for discussion is would the Board of Selectmen grant a one-time extension beyond June 30th to allow the employees to use the earned time off?
And, and the, and the reason this hasn't happened is because people have not been able to take time off during this period?
And nobody's been denied vacation. But because of all the, you know, the different modifications and things that are suspended and you know, the, just trying to work through the pandemic, folks have not been able to take their vacation. And now Rick's crew obviously is way up in their, you know, their work product just because it's summer and there's, you know, they're doing a lot more stuff, different projects.
Well, what's your, what's your thought, Jean?
Initially, it would, it would be to, to extend it out to October 31st. I'm not, this is the first I'm seeing of the the road crew wanting, wanting a, an extension, and I'm not even sure how to navigate through that because it's a, you know, it's a union contract. Rick, I'll defer to you. I imagine we would need to talk to Bill Trunup, the, the union guy.
I'm sure he would agree with it because they're getting their, they're, they're going to use it up this month, and I'll have nobody working, or you let them extend it, and then we can spread out when they take off over the course of the summer. As long as they're getting their days either way, they aren't going to object to that.
I'm just confused as to why they haven't been able to use them, their, their time in, in the timely manner. In fact, I mean, while I know this has been an emergency, and maybe not for you and, and all departments, but, but it seems like it's almost an ideal time to take a break every two or three days. It's not a vacation, but I don't think anyone's going on vacation vacation. No one's flying to Mexico. So I, I, help me here try to understand why why, why things have been delayed. And I, and I, I say that only with, with, with more, with question. I have no idea as to what, if somebody can give me an example, just so I can understand it.
Well, we have reduced the hours of our, you know, the clerk in my office is only there two days a week. Joe and Stan are now only there two days a week. So for me to be away, but then that office would only be open two days a week and not a complete five. So.
And, and I'm sorry, remind me, how many days do you have, Donna?
How many? I have eight days carryover. And then starting July 1st, then we're hit with our next calendar, next fiscal year of vacation time as well.
Yeah, and I, I, okay, that, thank you, Donna, that, that helps me understand it. So then it leads to the question, if you carry over these days longer, now we have more time off, right? And doesn't that?
Which is time off that we earn, right?
Well, I'm not just, well, you earned it, but you earned it within a fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
And we, and we allow often, and we allow carryover, right? That's have we allowed carryover?
We allow five days.
You're allowed five days. Okay, thank you. So, so if this didn't happen, Donna, you would be short three days, correct?
I would be, say, how do you figure I would be short three days?
Well, you get to carry five, so.
I would have, I would have used my vacation time because I would have been able to go away.
Okay, I got it. So, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to get my brain around this and, and how it works such that what I don't want to get into is a situation where someone is taking three weeks off straight, you know, and I know that's not what departments want to do, but certainly they would have the right to do that if you carry. Rick, you got 26 days?
30.
30 days, and then how many days you have next, next, next year?
What's our normal 40, I think of this? Well, or George said a few years ago, I believe it was 40 for
Yeah.
Including everything.
Yeah, okay. It's just curious to me as to how that, that works out. All right. Ed, thoughts? What are they doing with your?
You lose it.
You lose it?
You are allowed to carry over, but they don't care. The, the old saying is you should have used it during the year instead of saving it all up till the end.
Well, but even in this time of
I, I know, but that's what they're saying so far.
They're saying, okay, that's, that's, that's good information.
You asked me, what are they saying?
No, no, that's good information. And does anyone?
I don't think sending it out to October 31st does us any good either because we're still going to run into this situation. So if anything, if we're going to extend them, we should shorten it up and maybe make it like August, yeah, August 31st. And unfortunately, you're going to have people taking time off, but it's either that or lose it.
Okay, that's interesting.
Well, you asked, so that's why, yeah.
What, what is, does anyone know what the, the teachers are doing? Or do they have a different, different, whole different, the union issue?
I have no idea.
And nobody knows what's happening with the janitors or any of the other crew that, no?
Yeah, I I think they're, aren't they back doing their, all their prep for that they would normally be doing in a week or two? I think they've been back for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I don't know what as far as, you know, any unused vacation time. I have no idea.
I, I would, I mean, I'm not sure that, just, I'm not, I'm scratching the gray matter because, from doing HR stuff, but I didn't think that once you earned your vacation that you could lose it. So, I mean, that's something that's given to you that you have earned, and if you can't use it, I've never worked in an environment where they took it away from you. And I don't know what the the fair labor and, and all that says about it. I just, I can't, I can't put my finger on it yet, so.
I, I would agree with you, Donna.
Can I comment? I, I agree with you, Donna. I just think once you've gotten to your amount that you're allowed to have, you don't earn anymore. That's the way the State of Connecticut works. You don't lose it. You just don't earn anymore until you've come back down below that level again. That's how the State of Connecticut works, operates.
I think what you'd have to look at is, is actually what the policy says about how you earn vacation and, and how that applies to each one.
Yeah.
Correct.
For that now. For that now. Time off. Full-time employees shall be entitled to a set number of paid time off days each fiscal year based on their length of service as of June 30th of the previous fiscal year. A multi-position employee's length of service shall be calculated from the date they qualified as a full-time employee. Paid time may often be used for any purpose, including vacations, sickness, bereavement, or family issues. Excuse me, and the employee is not obligated to explain their purpose, but additional days will be awarded for any purpose beyond the schedule as follows. And it flushes out less than one year, one year for, one day for every 10 weeks. And then in service at least one year, but less than five years, it's 25 days. Five to 10 years, it's 30 days. 10 to 15 years, it's 35 days. At 15 and more, or more, it's 40 days. When an employee reaches an anniversary date that would entitle them to additional PTO, the number of additional days is awarded, the number of additional days awarded shall be appropriated for the remaining time in that fiscal year, rounded up to the nearest half, half day. PTO must be used in half or full day increments and in the fiscal year they were, are awarded, except that after one year of service, employees are, employees awarded PTO may bank up to five unused days each year, up to a maximum of 60 days, and then draw on those unused days in any subsequent fiscal year with the approval of their department or selectmen. So I think that's that, what you guys were talking about. Correct?
All right. Well, is, is there a plan for those who have days, days off coming to them in the next, what, how many days? 15 days? Plans to take some of those days off or, or is it, or is the idea to, you know, get them so that you can use them for a substantial amount of time? I know that's not the goal, but obviously that would be, be, you know, an advantage if, as Ed suggests, you can even go anywhere in October.
I don't have any plan, I don't have any plans to take any time off until probably the end of July, if we can even go away then.
And that, Donna, is that because you're just slammed?
Um, I think part of it is, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say that I'm slammed, no. But I'm thinking that if I am the one that's the head of the department, it's my responsibility to be there as often as I can. That's my main goal. That's, that's, that's how, what I, that's the way I work. So usually July, the end of July, the beginning of August does slow down for us. So, you know, I mean, it's, I wouldn't be in the office. I would be reachable, but I, I know, but I wouldn't be here.
Well, my inclination would be to say, especially those who are, are close to the number is, please, you know, I, while your dedication is admirable, you've also earned time off and we don't want to burn you out for July 1 fiscal year. And heck, if you haven't been under stress these days, I don't even know when anyone else has been under more stress. I think the town has to understand that, that, you know, that you deserve time off. You earned it. And so I would encourage that, you know, that we try to use up those and, and flop over the five days in the cases of some, those who are that, down that load. Others are carrying huge numbers and I don't know how, I don't know.
I mean, for me, it's not a, it's not a big deal because it's, you know, it's eight days. But you've got Joyce, who is a single, you know, she runs that department by herself. She, she needs to be there, especially now. And same thing with Rick, you know? So I don't think that you can lump all of us together in the same, in the same boat. It's, it's just not feasible to do that.
But I think we want to be equitable across the board. But I do get that there's, you know, Rick and Joyce have many more, you know, days. And everybody's had their nose to the grindstone for, you know, months and months now. And.
Well, I guess my, my bigger problem is, is, my biggest, bigger concern, if you will, is why haven't, it's not just now. Why, Rick, you got a lot of time and you're, you're always at work. And, and my concern is for all departments and all people to make sure they are taking their time off. And just, that's what happens. Time gets taken off because you earn it and you should use it. And Rick, you know, I've made this point before, when you were running with a slimmer crew and you'd come out at three in the morning and you did it to save, you know, overtime from two other guys. And just, in my opinion, it's sleep and let the, let us, let the taxpayer pay for the overtime. It's not, it's not going to help the town and certainly not going to help you if indeed we, we lose, lose good people because of burnout or not doing the things that they've earned. So I'm, I'm, I'm touching on a bigger, bigger concern. And clearly, you know, some people, shouldn't say manage, is not the right word, have been able to have the opportunity to take time off. And I think that's great, but I would encourage everybody who has time to, dang guys, go home. Take some time off. And I just don't want to, I don't want to face this problem next year when, I don't know, whatever problem is, and, and we have to slide over more time.
I think this, you know, it, it sort of snuck up on, on everybody. And, you know, I know that, you know, just specifically Joyce has had her, you know, she's been available, available, available. And, and this is something that's never happened, you know? And we were working to get the work done and pivoting because it, you know, there was a point where it was, I don't know, Joyce, every, you know, couple of hours, it was something new that we needed to do in this sort of urgent fashion. And then, and, you know, it built up before we, before we knew it had built up. And it was Joyce that actually brought it to my attention. And I, you know, I think we need to be better about just keeping an eye on it. And I think everybody now that we've seen this is going to keep a better eye on it and, you know, hoping for no second wave. But I think you're right, Chris. People need to take a break. They need to unwind as we talk about this at 9:15 at night.
And what, help me here, because I'm going to pick up the string that Donna was talking about because it's, it's, and I'm not in corporate world and not in a world where you actually get vacation time, but what, when people retire, sometimes they have like 150 days of, of time off. And are they compensated, are they compensated for that time? Like money wise, because it's money in effect.
Barbara, you're still on the call, right? We, we pay that out.
Can you rephrase that question? We don't ever pay out vacation time when people don't take vacation because we haven't been faced with that situation yet.
No, if I, if I were an employee for 40 years and I ended up retiring and I had, I'm making it up, 130 days of vacation time not taken, do I get compensated for that?
Well, it depends if you're one of the Teamsters people or one of the other people. It is laid out in the policy and procedure manual. There is some provision where the employees get to get paid out of their banked time.
Okay.
If you, if you retire July 2nd, which is the day after you get the bullus of PTO, that would, that would get paid out, correct, Barbara?
I'd have to look at the policy and procedure manual to answer that 100% accurately right this moment.
Yeah.
I remember correctly, I think you do get paid out for it because it is time that you have already earned. Some companies will, once you reach a certain max and you still have time left to go to work, they'll pay you out to cut down your days by half. And then you start your bank all over again. But once you've earned it, you're supposed to get paid for it.
And I, to me, I, that makes 100%, that just makes sense to me. So to move this along, I would make a motion that we push this out till October 31st. Did you second that, Jean?
Yes, sorry.
Here's, here's the discussion. I think it's, it behooves all of us to make sure that we watch this diligently. And if we have to kick somebody's butt out of town hall for a week so they take vacation time, then that's what we're really going to have to do. Because it doesn't make any sense for me, from my perspective, to have somebody work and work and work and work and work and not take the time off that they've earned. The taxpayers have accepted it and they willingly pay for it. And in fact, the taxpayers probably don't want somebody who's burnt out, even though they really respect the fact that these people are working for their benefit. Makes sense?
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't, I don't see this as a trend or a habit that, you know, that anybody intended to, to create or that will happen again next year. And I think now that we know about it, we'll, like you said, just keep a better eye on it.
But I, and let me, let me, I mean, it's really hard because October 31st is going to come. And to pick on Rick, Rick's going to have 70 days that he still hasn't worked, you know, still hasn't taken any. It's, that's crazy.
I drop back to 40 then.
I'm sorry, yeah, then you're back to 40.
I dropped back to 40 then.
I, I think we all, you need to use them or lose them, or, except for the five days get to roll.
Yeah. Well, that's October 31st too, so.
Yep. Ed?
I think we need to come up with a different policy at some point after this.
I agree with you.
And do it. And then, and put it in writing so there aren't any questions and then we won't have to go through this again.
Fair enough.
You just don't earn any, you know, the, if your date comes, let's say June 30th, you don't earn your time until you've used up on the books or however, that can be done later. But I think we'll just live with it for now.
Okay.
Says now, we're just, it's a one-time for this.
Yeah, but we, the town has dealt with this before. I remember a long time ago, we had the same problem. We had, we allowed people to carry time over.
Well, I agree with you, Ed. Let's, let's deal with that before, before we get to the end.
Right, yep. Yep.
Ready to vote?
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Yes. Do we have the other request about the? Thank you. So one of the employees came to me, uh, um, came to me today and, um, was making a request to have part-time hourly employee converted, if you will, for lack of a better word, to part-time salaried employee. And so looking at the employee manual, sorry, it's just there. It would require a policy change and I'm, right now, there are. So in the benefits section of the policy manual, there are, there are buckets of employees and, and they refer back to their job description. But it's part-time hourly, part-time salaried, and full-time salaried. And the list is not quite complete in this policy, but the position which, that came up is under the part-time hourly employees. It's an assistant position and in all the other assistant positions in the part-time salary employees, it's animal control officer, tax assessor, and treasurer. And it's also tax collector, but that position's not on the list, but is part of that grouping.
Jean?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Nope, you're good.
Um, one, I'm tired. Two, this really just came up today. And now we're talking policy and we're talking changing stuff. I can, can we get from this individual, whoever it is, an outline as to what the proposal is? And I think that that should be run by the treasurer. I think it should be run by, you know, our policy, you know, matched up against our policy and then report it to us as a formal request. Because I think, I'm not in the, in the brain space to start thinking about changing a policy from a, you know, what, what's it, from a part-time, I mean, hourly to a salary. I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that without really understanding what we're looking at.
Okay, so will Ed, I'm sorry, Ed?
I agree. We can table this.
Okay, so I'll go back, get some more information, work with Barbara, with them, and we'll come back with a more fleshed out proposal for discussion for next.
Yeah, what the implications are. And if, if it isn't, if there are no implications and it's simple, then, then we all have in front of us. If it's got permutations that we need to look at, let's get at them. Thank you.
Will do. And I believe that's, that's everything. Joyce, am I missing anything? I lost track of my agenda in my notebook, in my giant binder, going back and forth. I think that's it. So it is 9:23 and we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody for.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Bye.